Now we can go to our presentations. And this evening, we have an update on the municipal parking lot sewer line project. And I understand that we have some members of the Great Salt Bay Sanitary District joining us. We don't see them.
Robin, I told, I told the various players to be here at 5:45.
Ah, we're moving real fast, huh?
We can, we can continue down the agenda and then.
Come back to it.
Just go back up, yeah.
Okay, okay. Citizens comments, general correspondence? Matt, anything?
I don't have any general correspondence, but there may be some folks on the line who will have citizen comments.
Anybody that's at the meeting have anything they'd like to bring up? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the budget calendar.
The board approved the budget calendar at your earlier meeting.
Yes.
So we're set with that. We reviewed it with the budget committee. And I did want to discuss change orders for grant funded projects. As I mentioned in the town manager notes, when we have these grant funded projects, there's a, of course, the larger projects have a number of, of change orders. And the typical process is that the engineer and the clerk of the works or the, the, the town's representative on the, on the, on the project would review them and then recommend them to me. And then I would review them with, with, in this case, for the waterfront project, George Parker. And, and then if they're okay, then I'd send them to EDA, the Economic Development Administration for approval. But what I wanted to do is, is flag this for the board to see if you would like any, any involvement in that, that process. And it, it seems to me that, that you should, or, or at least some of the selectmen should be involved. And I guess, you know, I talked to Josh and Robin about this. And I'm thinking that one way this could work is, would be to have the two selectmen members of the Public Works Committee review those. I could have, I could email those, those change orders to those two people as soon as I get them. And they could be reviewing them at the same time George and I do. And then once I had your go ahead, then I would submit them to the Economic Development Administration. But if you didn't, if you didn't agree with them or had some questions, I could always go back to the, the engineer or the contractor. So if that's agreeable, the, well, that router, if the entire board wants to be involved in that, we could do that process. My only concern is the timing, since I've got to go through several steps already. I wouldn't want to wait for the next Board of Selectments meeting.
I think having just the two members of the Public Works Committee involved initially, because they are most intimately familiar with the project anyway. And if they see something that looks like a red flag or whatever, then they can bring it to the rest of us, but I trust their judgment.
Yeah.
Mark, Daryl, any comments?
No, I agree with that, yeah.
Okay. Do we need a motion or no?
No, that's good. We have a consensus on that and, and that's the way we'll proceed.
And that works for you, Lou and Josh?
It does.
Okay, perfect. Okay, good. All right. The annual report dedication is coming up and the Spirit of America tribute recognition.
Oh, yeah, that's just a reminder that that's, that's coming up. As you saw in the, you may have seen on the budget calendar, we want to have those finalized by the end of February. So give it some thought.
Do you have any, if you have any recommendations, go ahead and email them to Matt for both the report dedication and the Spirit of America award.
And then Patty Whitten, I think you're on the line here. If, if that is true, maybe the board could move to the cemetery landscape contract and then we can move back up. There's Patty.
Eddie, are you here?
I am.
Okay, has everyone had a chance to review the cemetery committee management contract?
I didn't send you the contract again. It's the same contract that you had last year, that you approved last year.
It's the letter.
It would just be extended. The board has, under that, the terms of that contract, the board has the, the option of extending it for another two years. And I can give you the history why we only did one year. But in this particular case, Jake, who was the, the successful bidder on the project, has been working for us for a number of years and doing a good job. I think the, the cemetery committee, which is, I think Patty would agree to this. They're very particular about the way cemeteries are maintained. And, and Jake Braley has been responsive to, to the requests by and large. So the recommendation of the committee and staff is to approve the, the extension of that contract for two more years, for a total of three years.
I make a motion, we extend the contract for two years, the present contract.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I, I have a question, Robin, for Patty. Did any of the scope of the, this contract change from the previous contract?
No, it's the same, same requirements.
Okay, thank you.
There were, there were some changes from the one that you approved last year to the, from the earlier one. But they were just mainly focused on, you know, tightening up some of the language.
Any other comments, questions?
I think they've done a nice job. It really looks nice.
Yes. Okay, all in favor? And I guess, just to say, they've been doing a good job, but I tell you what, the volunteers, and I know Matt is one of the volunteers that go out and do a lot of work on the cemeteries.
Yeah.
Terrific. So thanks to all the volunteers, the committee, Patty, and all the work you and your committee does, and then all the volunteers that, that also contribute to the beautification, if you will, of our cemeteries. It's really wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you. And there are, there are people on the screen right now who are helping in that. We have a good cadre of folks and we're very grateful for all that help. Thank you.
Well, thank you and thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Matt, if you want to keep.
We have, we have Jan Wedman on the line. And I see iPad Scott second. I think that's Leanna from the Sanitary District. May have a couple of trustees. Leanna, can we, can you put on your video?
Yeah, her audio is off too.
It's not, it's not Leanna, it's me.
Oh, it's Scott.
I'm just a bystander.
So you're not at the office, Scott, are you?
No, I'm at home.
Okay.
No, I'm just, I just was listening in.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right.
So do we want to just go ahead and wait for a few minutes until we see somebody pop up on the screen and come back to this?
Nope.
Sounds good.
Okay with me.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the date, time and location for the annual meeting. And Matt, if we could add to that, some of the concerns that Mark expressed in our budget committee meeting about in-person versus secret ballot, balloting during our annual meeting.
We've, Cheryl mentioned to me before she hit it out tonight that, you know, this last year, we've had three elections and all of them have been record-setting attendance. So I, I think everyone agrees that the best way to reach the most people is a, a secret ballot election. And of course, that, that allows for the ballots, for the drop-off ballots as well. So my, my, my recommendation was to put the more substantive items. And I guess that's, that's subjective, but my thought was put the more subjective items on the secret ballot or substantive items on the secret ballot. And then the, the routine issues put on open meeting ballot. Some towns are, are putting their entire warrant on a secret ballot. And that might be, that might be a mistake, you know. Typically, we have, well, at a low, low side, we had 26 articles. I think we've gone up to the high 40s, 46, 48. And that, that creates some issues if people have to vote on that many warrant articles. So I guess the question for the board is, what would you like to see on the, the secret ballot versus the, the ballot that we take to an open town meeting? Or do you prefer to put everything on a, on a secret ballot?
Now, last year, we had 32 articles on the ballot. Or I'm sorry, on the warrant.
No, our intent would be, of course, to put the, the, the two items related to the historical preservation ordinance, the amendments, and then the amendment to the, the charter on the, on the, I'm looking at the waiting room here, on the secret ballot. But we could do some others as well.
Matt, I have a question. Is the town charter, you know, make us, is it require us to have a town meeting, open town meeting, or could it be a referendum?
Boy.
Let me just double check. I think it says a town meeting in accordance with state statutes.
That's my thought. But I talked to Matt while he's looking it up. I talked to him earlier today. I said, you know, if we plan for the worst and hope for the best, maybe by June, with all the vaccinations going on and what have you, we will be more open. So it will be less of an issue.
I just think the larger money items, whatever we can put onto that within reason, just to get more people involved.
If we go, do we, I guess the question I have, if we go for a secret ballot for everything, and we'll say 42 to 45 items, how long will that take to count if we have a turnout? We won't know the election results for a while, because we also, we have, in addition to the ordinances, we have elections of selectmen. I don't know if there are other elections right off the top of my head. But I guess we can get some, some of the people that work the election polls to come in and count these ballots as easily as they worked the election polls in the last election, huh?
You know, I can, my, my thing is about this is that when we do have an open town meeting, if this is still going on, you know, there are individuals within voter population that won't take the risk to come vote, you know, at an open town meeting, but would come to do a ballot, secret ballot at the town. So, you know, I, I love to have open town meetings, but if we can't have that open town meeting and we can't get enough people, you know, and we can find more ways to get more people with a referendum ballot, ballot, I guess, take thing. And I haven't figured out how, what's the best, but the more people, the better.
That's why I say if we plan for the worst and hope for the best, you know, because things may change between now and June, we can only hope.
Josh raises a good question, and I'm afraid we'll need to ask for a legal opinion on it. They, they, I'm looking at section 6.01 of the charter. And it doesn't say that you have to have an open town meeting, but then if you read the language, it presumes that there's action taken by a floor vote, which would, could only be done in an open town meeting. However, there are a number of governor's orders that, that have come to pass. You'll recall from last, last year, or the last fiscal year, where the governor allowed certain leeway with regard to the town meetings. And I have to look at those to see if you can avoid an open town meeting entirely. I guess at a minimum, we could have a, a secret ballot election where most, if not all of the items are voted on at the, on the secret ballot. And then we just have a perfunctory open town meeting, which may have, you know, one or two items on it. But I need to get a legal opinion on, on the, on the question of whether or not we can avoid having the open town meeting in lieu of a secret ballot.
So can we tonight then, and you know, pending what you hear, can we vote and set the date and time and location for the annual town meeting, just to get it on the calendar? And then at our next meeting, you should have a decision on how, what we can do or can't do.
I think they already did.
They who?
Matt, maybe?
We, we, before I, every time before I come to you and ask you to, to approve a location, I need to find a location. So we, we did book the pool.
Yeah, that's why I say we have to vote on that, though.
Yeah, you have to vote on it and then I, you know, confirm it with them. But if you decided not to have an open town meeting, then I would cancel that reservation.
Yeah. So if we were to go ahead and vote on the date, time and location for the town meeting, pending the decision of, you know, the ability or capability of us to have an open town meeting. And as, as you say, then we can always make the adjustment in the next two weeks.
Now, Matt, is the, the venue was reserved anyway, correct, for GSB school?
Yes.
And I, I guess my thought on this is to talk to Becky and the town staff to figure out how much of a cost and how many people we're going to need for election workers. Just, just to see if that's a doable solution to do the majority of these articles on the secret ballot. So I, my, I would like to see maybe if we just table it for the first meeting in February, just so they could, they could process it and see, see what we are. I don't know if everybody else feels the same as I do about doing as many as we can. I know Mark would like to do as many, so. Yeah. How Daryl would feel.
And maybe. No, I, I, I think it's, looking at voter turnout and how well received, you know, the ballot drop box and whatnot is. The more you can get on the ballot, less, less in-person seems a good idea, so, yeah.
I guess the only question or concern I have is that most ballot issues are yes or no. Do you like this ordinance? Yes or no? Do you like this? Yes or no? But for the budget warrant items in, you know, every town meeting that I've been to, somebody always asks a question. And no one will have that capability. And once or twice, not often, but once or twice, budgets have been changed now meeting. So you don't have that capability. But that having been said, I certainly do understand, you know, everybody's concerns about getting together in big groups. So let's go ahead and table it, find out from Becky how that could work with 42 warrant items. I guess one of the concerns I, I have as well is people that vote early is fine, because they'll go ahead and they'll get their materials and they'll go home and they'll sit at their desk or kitchen table or wherever they sit and work through all of that. But if people come into the town office to vote, are they going to spend the time to work through 42 or 45, whatever, warrant items and vote? But we'll worry about that another day.
Yeah, we can push for early voting, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Okay.
An out of, out of towner, so you'll have to give me permission to speak.
Absolutely. Of course, you have my permission to speak. What do you think? Do we need to vote on that?
Well, I don't know. It's up to you.
No, not at a slight.
The one question that comes up on this sort of thing, and I've been through this before, well, Newcastle, not so much. If somebody wants to amend an article, there doesn't seem to be a process for doing that. Unless you have hearings, you do it at the hearings ahead of time or the vote.
So if, if it's an ordinance, you can't amend it.
None of them, not an ordinance, no budget.
But if, and the, and the other items, well, any item that has a dollar amount, it depends on the way the ordinance is worded. The, the article is worded. So what we do so that the citizens have the maximum flexibility at the town meeting, as we say, to see what some, the, the town will raise inappropriate for such and such an item. So the, the, the citizens attending that meeting have some latitude. But when you like, you get to the provider agencies and because it's typically a petition process, it's either yes or no.
Right.
There's no opportunity to amend.
So in this case, if we then go to the secret ballot, rather than saying, what some do you recommend or whatever, you would just say, do you? You know, yes or no, this is the amount.
Approve. And then if it, you know, when, when Waldorf goes back quite a few years, but when they first went to a, a secret ballot for their, their budget, they had to go back to secret ballot vote several times. I don't know if you all remember that. But it turned down the budget, the voters turned down the budget, and then it was up to the, you know, the Board of Selectmen there to decide what do they want to propose next to see voters may approve. So it got to be quite a mess there. I don't know that that would happen here. I think voters generally are pleased with the way the, the board is run and the, the town is run.
Well, let's go ahead and table it for a week, two weeks, whatever, our first meeting in February.
If, if I could, Robin.
Okay.
Yeah, just the other thought in here is if, if you have 43 secret ballot items, then it's going to take a lot of time for people. It seems like a lot of people may go through and put all yeses or all no's, or they're going to read each one and want to make a responsible decision on each one. So just take that, that factor into account.
That's why I said, Daryl said, you know, vote early, early voters, so they can pick up their packet and take it home and study it, you know, before they vote. Because if you're in, standing in line in town office to vote, it's going to take a long time. So Matt, if you would ask Becky to, you know, look at everything and give us the recommendation or voice of concerns for, I think it's February 1st, 2nd meetings, and we can make a decision. February 3rd, to make a decision and finalize everything on February 3rd. Pardon me?
Matt, I didn't get a second time for what you voted on at the budget committee.
No, we were looking at the date, time and location for the annual meeting.
Right, but I don't, I didn't hear anyone say what the day and time were. You said it was discussed at the, at the budget.
Oh, right.
Meeting.
Yeah, we're going to table the discussion until our next meeting, because there are some questions that need to be answered.
Okay, so the, the date and time is still up to me here also?
Yeah, yeah, because if it's a secret ballot, then a timing is not a, you know, the date is going to be set date, but the time won't be. It'll be a different time. Okay, so our next meeting, February 3rd, we'll have answers to all these questions. Okay, if we go back up to the presentation, update on the municipal parking lot sewer project. Matt, do you want to kick it off or turn it over?
And Jan is, is going to be reviewing with you the, the project to date. And then Leanna, are you there?
It says she's there.
I just want to know if Leanna and, and the trustees are there. Leanna, can you hear me? I know a couple of the trustees were planning to attend tonight. And they were, according to Leanna, they were going to go to the Great Salt Bay Sanitary District office. And they were all going to be on the, the, the line. So I don't know if that's the case or not. But I guess if Leanna has comments and she can hear, she can, she can chime in. But essentially, the reason I asked that this be put on the agenda and that I, well, went ahead and put it on the agenda is that I would, number one, like to review this, this project with you. You, you've had updates from me, but you're hearing from the, the layperson's perspective. I thought, given the, some of the complexities that we've had, it would be good to have Jan, the, the engineer on the project kind of walk you through from the west end of the parking lot to the, the east end. And in the course of that conversation, he can flag for you some of the issues that we've had to deal with. And in particular, and this is where I'd like the discussion to go, want to review with you kind of a, an impasse that we're, we're at with the Sanitary District on a couple of the, at least one of the service lines. So, and because we were involving another elected body in this discussion, I think it's only appropriate that it, it, it be at the, the Board of Selectmen level. So Jan, if you want to start off, I think all of you know Jan Min, he is a principal engineer at Wright Pierce and is the engineer for our restroom project, our water, our sewer line project and our waterfront project, the bigger project along with Malone and McBroom. So, and Jan, can you do the share screen as well to walk folks through? Okay, I turn it over to Jan.
If you could disable or allow me to share the screen, that'd be great.
I, I did at the start of the meeting. Oh, there it is. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, screen, this one. Okay. First of all, thank you for, for having me. As Matt mentioned, I am an engineer with Wright Pierce and the project manager for this, for the sewer project. And just to give you an overview, I've kind of zoomed in a little bit so you can kind of see, hopefully you can see the plan. But starting in the, on the left side, you can see the sewer line has been installed, everything in black, the dark black here is the sewer line has been installed to date. We've got a service lateral that comes up here and picks up these four buildings here. And we've got a, we've got a line that's installed into near Taco Alley that'll pick up these buildings up in here. The gas station is tied in directly already. And then this is the new restroom that'll be, that's under construction now. We have a new sewer line that's, that's going to be placed yet with a manhole adjacent, or just adjacent to the restroom. with a manhole adjacent or just adjacent to the restroom that'll pick up the the sewer line from River Grill and these buildings here, but not the not Dammer Scotta Center. Dammer Scotta Center's line comes out in this location here, but it's at an elevation. It's it's five and a half feet below grade in this area, which is much deeper than than we could get with the with the main line here. And then Rennie's currently their line comes out here and it's also about six or seven feet below grade. And they've committed to redoing some piping inside both the Rennie's store and the adjacent space that they now control as well to bring those lines out in two locations that'll tie into the manhole that's here. And then the last segment is to tie into the, it's currently now the the eight-inch sewer main that comes from Water Street and it runs all the way down to the pump station here to connect into that line and direct the flow from that line into this new line and then into the pump station here. And the reason for that is apparently that, at least from the sewer district's perspective, expressed desire to do that because of a sag in the line that's over here. So some of the issues that we've been discussing recently. We've been discussing how do we serve Dammer Scotta Center? Because that line is so low. One of the options, there's we see there's two potential options. One would be to leave the line in place, connecting up to this existing sewer main. And then that would be the only line on that sewer main. Several issues with that. One is that all these existing lines that connect in the sewer main would have to be cut off at the sewer main. Prevent infiltration occurring that's now occurring in these lines because these are old lines through the parking lot that are that have you know, they have joints that have come apart or slightly separated, they're not as watertight as as the modern piping, this a lot of these piping is very old, it comes across the parking lot. So in order to to prevent a lot of that groundwater from coming into the sewer and having to be treated, they would have, we would have to cut off these pipes here at the, you know, at the main themselves. The reason why that's problematic is that this main, the elevation, this main is below sea level. So and a lot of these lines coming across the parking lot, especially these, the Dammer Scotta Center line and this old Rennie's line are also, you know, at or below sea, the zero elevation of sea level. Mean mean sea level, which is, you know, below the water at some point. Not tide cycle. And what we found too in our in our excavation of our line through here, the soils are in very are very poor condition. The line at the west end here was, obviously it's a deeper line in this area because, you know, it slopes up as it comes across the site. That line, we were, it was a very difficult excavation because of the the depth and the groundwater and the and the poor soil conditions. So the trench widths got larger because the sides would cave in, they had to use trench boxes, they had to de-water and so forth going across. As they get, as they've gotten up in this end, that condition has has gotten less severe because the pipes risen in in relative to the surface of the surface elevation. So the the other solution would be, the first solution would be to leave this in place. We'd have to plug the line, you know, the the eight-inch sewer line here. And then sewer line essentially would be would be a sewer service for Dammer Scotta Center. But with the sag in the line, there's some concern that over time, there may be issues or it may be a serviceability issue for that line that it may may not be sloped enough for the low flow that it may clog. The other alternative is in purple here is a is a small pump station. It's a it's a single two horsepower pump that's in a manhole, so it can be underneath the parking lot. And what would happen is we would install that pump station and make a connection to this service lateral deep and then have a force main that comes out and goes into this manhole at a higher elevation, essentially lifting up the sewer from here by gravity. And from that point on, and the discussion has been to power that pump station from the new restroom building, put the control panel on that restroom building. And one of the issues there is that who's going to maintain that pump station? And so there's a discussion with the sewer district there, would they be willing to maintain it? And apparently they don't want to take on another, and I don't want to speak for the sewer district, but what we've heard is they don't want to take on another pump station necessarily as a public pump station. And if they were to maintain it, they would probably need to charge a fee to the town for for that service that they'd be providing. So those are some of the discussions. I'd love to hear from the sewer district to see what, or from Matt, if you've got anything else to add to the discussion or George.
Let me just say that Leanna was having some difficulties with her computer, so they're able to hear and watch, but they they can't speak. So what I've done, it's going to be, we're going to get some feedback every time I unmute, but I have them on my speakerphone. So we've got Bobby Ware, Alan Ray and John Gallagher on the line. So George, do you want to go ahead and add anything that you?
Well, yeah, I think I think Matt and I over the weekend sort of went over all of these issues and then we had a meeting with Jan and Leanna. When was that, yesterday? Whenever it was. It led to this meeting here. I know Matt and I would say the simplest thing would be to leave that deep line in place, but it does, it will be the only line that goes into the big gravity, which is going to be an issue for keeping that line flowing properly with very low amount of work going into it. And so it would appear that the lift station would be the best thing, but I think we're right now, we're sort of at a point that we need to down with the sanitary district and and discuss the realities of not only maintaining the pumps and the pump station, but the emergency power, you know, when the downtown goes out of power, which actually happens, I think Matt figured Dr. C M P. And it happens more often than out on the east part of town. So and there's a couple of options that Jan had proposed relative to either hooking up with a just a gasoline generator at your house on an as-needed basis and or a battery backup system. Those are the issues we discussed the other day. You, Matt or Jan can weigh in on whether that covers it properly.
Sounds fine. That sounds accurate, George.
One thing I will add in too, it has nothing to do with this one. If you go back over to the Newcastle Realty Serendipity, which is actually Gordon Nichols Building and Penways portion of that building. There was some question in terms of how that whole thing was hooked up together and and I was down in the crawl space yesterday with Leanna. And the the line from Penn's building actually comes into the basement of Gordon Nichols Building and then it goes out and connects to the the entry sewer number two, I guess it is, and confirms what Leanna did. And it goes to a cast iron pipe outside and everything seems to be in good condition. So that's kind of solved that mystery a bit because they they were trying to find a separate line coming out of Penways Building, but couldn't do it and abandoned it. So but it is all connected up properly.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to add a couple of points here. I just want to look at the, first of all, the bigger picture here. The the parking lot built prior to the sanitary district being formed. And so what happened was anytime there was a change in the 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 sewers, the sewers previously dumped right into the river. So when the sanitary district was formed, you know, they were they were connected to this gravity line and then pumped back up to the the station, the the sewer facility, the plant facility, the force main, and then the effluent from that was was delivered back into the the harbor via the effluent line. All three of those lines are at the the bottom of the the parking lot on on your your map here. So because of the timing and the fact that many of these deeds, many of these agreements with the various businesses were were done at, you know, at different times with different players, we ended up with a a mass of different agreements. And the issue, at least since I've been here, and I think this dates back long before I arrived, has been who's responsible for the sewer line under the the parking lot? And who's responsible for some of these actual service line hookups? The town has deeds that go back to the early nineteen sixties that say that the the businesses don't have any responsibility for their line except where it enters their building. And, you know, there's everything in between that and and the fact that the 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 businesses own right to the outlet and to the to the harbor. So or what we used to be into the harbor. So it's all over the place. So a very long story short, we've been having this hot potato going back and forth between the sanitary district, the town and the business owners about who's responsible for the the sanitary lines in the parking lot. Leanna and I have jointly put in grants, grant applications to get the improvements done to the sewer lines and with the hope that that would resolve the issue, the sanitary district would take take over the lines once they were replaced. We were fortunate in that the town was able to get the E D A, Economic Development Administration, to include the sanitary, the replacement of the sanitary sewer lines in the parking lot to include those in our grant application that was ultimately approved. So here we're at a point where the town is taking responsibility for replacing the sewer lines in the parking lot. And we're at the point where and and the sanitary district, you know, we've been working with them on the connections and such. And the sanitary district saw that we were going to put in this new collector line, this new interceptor line. You know, more well closer to the the various businesses, which has a lot of benefits. And they said, well, we can just hook in our our main line, our gravity collector line into that new line and abandon what has up until recently was thought to be a problem line that they have that goes on the waterfront. And we said, great. And we've not been able to identify, this has been a source of frustration for everybody. We've not been able to identify the locations of the service lines. And until recently, thought that this new service line would be able to accommodate all these these service lines across the parking lot. But come to find out, because we didn't know where the the Rennie's line and the Dammer Scotta River Grill line was, it turns out they're below the the new line level. So there has to be some accommodation made. Well, Rennie's being the excellent business that they they are the business partner, I should say, and very community minded, said, well, we're thinking about making some changes anyway in our our plumbing and specifically the sewer system. So we will raise our outlet that attaches to the line to the the town's new service line. And Dammer Scotta Center is not in the same position. They're in a position where they're saying the sewer line works fine now. Why should we pay anymore for all this work that the town's doing? So we're in a bit of a bind and to kind of summarize the issues that we're the point we're at now and and kind of what I just what I've gleaned from my conversation with Leanna is that we're at a we're at a standstill here, kind of an impasse. Because what I'm saying is that the the entire reason for us making these improvements through the grant and picking up a quarter of the cost, by the way, is to clarify all this and give the the let go of any responsibility the town has for public sewer lines and turn that over to the sanitary district where it should be. And I think that's that's been our motivation from the beginning. And now what we're saying is, well, we have to make this additional accommodation because Dammer Scotta Center line is below grade and it needs to be pumped up or we need to leave it where where it is. And, you know, the source of the impact is, well, if the town through this grant, and again, the town's paying a quarter of this, if we're agreeable to building this lift station, cost of about twenty thousand all told, including some type of generator, will the sanitary district maintain it? We don't want to be, the town doesn't want to be, and I know the selectmen agree with me on this. We don't want to be in the position of taking over sanitary sewer responsibilities. And that's that's kind of the case and that's the impasse we're at. Because the sanitary district, according to Leanna and her discussions with the trustees, is saying, no, they don't want to take responsibility for this lift station. It's either the town's responsibility or it's the Dammer Scotta River Grill's responsibility. They don't want to add to the eight lift stations that they have to maintain now. So just wanted to give that background. I I hope this isn't a contentious issue, but I I just think that the town has gone above and beyond to try to resolve these ownership issues and pay for considerable portion of these improvements. And we, you know, we we want some accommodation from the the sanitary district. I'll be quiet so you don't get all the feedback from my voice.
I see Scott's iPad is raising a hand. Does that mean that Scott would like to speak? If you do, you have to unmute.
Well, I don't know if Leanna wants to talk first or not. I have a couple of questions as a citizen.
Sure. Go ahead.
Do you want me to go now or have Leanna go first or?
Matt, is Leanna want to talk?
They're on the, they're on my speakerphone.
Okay, does she want to go ahead and present her side? Oh, can't hear.
You know, I they hung up.
You want me to, can I ask some questions?
Yes. Go ahead.
So the laterals, I thought, maybe I'm wrong, didn't Jenny say that the town was responsible for the laterals under the parking lot? Coming out of the buildings? Because that's town.
Oh, to this point, the answer to that would be was no. I'm the answer was no. We've, you know, I don't know if you were at the meeting, Scott, a couple of years ago when when Jim Gallagher attended the the when Jim Gallagher attended the, the um, the trustees meeting along with, with um, a couple of the select and myself and Travis Pryor from Wright Pierce. But the position that, that Jim backed up and that Jenny backed up was that, no, the town did not have responsibility for those laterals. Now, um, I'm trying to coordinate a cell phone call at the same time here. Um, but um, then when we, when we were in the, when we had a shot at the, the um, the grant, uh, we had to show that we had some ownership interest in those lines. So I had Jen, Jenny go back and say, Jenny, how can we go about showing that we've got some ownership in this, in these lines so that we can, can get this included in the grant? And that's, that's where we are today. Um, yeah.
Okay, but it's town property, correct?
It is town, they, okay.
Now, as far as.
Okay, now that, that, yeah, I, you know, it's, 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 there's no easy answers to this. Because when, when the, the town, um, again, and I think started in, in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, town decided to obtain the, the ownership rights, the, the, the surface rights to the parking lot. And so they were able to get a grant and the town was able to get a grant and they hired um, Gallagher to, to, to get those, obtain those reversionary, rescission of reversionary interest um, uh, rights from each of the building owners who were there when the parking lot was built. So they were able to accomplish that, but what is not clear is when the town obtained the deed to the parking lot, did we, did we also obtain the responsibility for the subsurface uh, water lines, sewer lines, whatever? That's not, that wasn't clear. That's why I say there's no, there's no easy answer to any of these questions. Our hope was by going for this grant, getting, getting the work done and then giving the public portion of the sewer system to the, the sanitary district, we resolved some of these issues.
I know by state statute, if you own property, you own what is under the property, whether it be a water supply or the gravel or anything. So, okay, I haven't, my next question. My next question is, why?
Scott? You're kind of have a lot of feedback. I'm not sure. Do you have your phone on and your, and your?
No. No.
That, that feedback is coming from my phone of, because Leanna's not able to get the audio, so I have to have them on the speakerphone. That's why I'm, I'm muting now.
Can you hear us now?
Auto tuned.
Matt, turn your phone on. I don't think this is working very well.
Zoom is fucking us here.
Yeah, this, yeah, the Zoom is doing okay. It's the, yeah.
What you doing?
So can I have another question while we're waiting or?
Yeah. Go ahead, Scott.
So on the new collector line, why were the elevations coming out of the building not taken? So the collector, new collector line would be low enough to pick up the other ones?
Sure, I can answer that, Scott. Um, the uh, in designing this, we went through and worked with Leanna and had indicated that, you know, the, the line, approximate line elevations from what she knew. Um, and.
Okay, can you stop a minute?
Yeah.
And where did she possibly get those elevations from? Was it from the engineering firm that originally put in the sewer lines?
No, the origi, the original sewer lines, when they went in, um, the connections were made down at the main and those, those service laterals, wherever the, they were connected to where the main came through. So for instance.
So, so where they hooked into the main sewer trunk would be lower than where it came out of the building?
That's correct.
So.
In working with.
If there was a quarter of an inch to a foot, you could kind of figure it, but you know there are ways to find the actual elevation of the sewer line.
That's correct. And, and what we've, what, what we've done and Leanna had, had, she's had some breaks in those areas that she's had historical records on that showed the maximum depth. And I think she was relying on a lot of that information uh, as to, you know, how deep those sewer lines were. And so that, that was the best information we had and that's what we had, uh, we've gone on. So that's, that's what we had used in the design of those lines.
Can I add one question of thought in here?
That's Scott again?
Well, that's me. Okay, um, the one, one thing to think about, if we knew, if we knew the depth of those lines originally, uh, and we either have to drop that main sewer line down to pick those up. And then by the time we got over to the west end of the parking lot to that new sewer manhole, it would be down deeper than that line and would need a lift station at that point. So the choice would be to build a lift station there or leave the deep lines where they are. That's, that's my take. I, you know, not being, you know, a, a civil engineer, but I think John may back me up on that. I mean, basically, we, we've got a situation where, okay, we've got this, what do we do with it?
Right.
And I think we've, we presented the two alternatives that seem reasonable.
Does Leanna want to say something?
Matt, they're, they're not. I, I, Leanna, are you there? No, I'm not. I'm not connected to them anymore. So I, I think.
Get his hand up, yeah.
I think what um, the best solution, I, I'm not asking the board for a decision now, but I think three of the trustees have, have um, have heard, at least my position, I, I don't know if you, if the board members want us to say anything more, but uh, I think they need to go back and meet as a group and decide which option they want us to pursue.
Yeah. Well, it would appear that we, you know, we all have some mutual ownership in this. Um, and you know, it, 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 from the town's point of view, um, with, you know, footing a lot of this here, we, we've, I think we're coming, coming pretty far, so we'd like to see some cooperation on all ends. Yep.
Yeah, I agree. I guess, you know, the town through its, and its matching funds, because some of the town's money is going into this and uh, have upgraded as near as I can figure, I'm not an engineer, sewage lines underneath the parking lot. We were told a couple of years ago that the one line closest to the water, the ground fed, whatever it is.
Do you want to say something to the?
Yeah.
Well, I had to reboot and collect uh, connect to the meeting again, so uh, we're waiting for you to let us in. I can just turn on speaker. I can't hear you anymore.
All right, so I don't see you in the waiting room. Okay, here you go. So, okay, I guess, Leanna, did you want to say something? I've got you on the speakerphone.
Well, let's see if, can, can you hear me without the speaker?
We can hear you now.
Yes.
Okay, good. I think I finally got it. We're there, right? Good. Did I hear all of Scott's questions?
Is Leanna going to talk? Is she going to give her point of view?
Oh, God.
Leanna, you're on, you're on, so if you want to say something to the board, you can.
She's muted again. She's muted now. Can you unmute her, Matt?
I can ask. Well, here she is on my speakerphone again.
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me get you on speaker here. I'm going to put it on intercom. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can, okay, good. We'll stay with that. Did we get all of Scott's questions?
I think he might have one more. Scott, do you have one more question or is your hand still up from before?
Um, I was going to let Leanna talk.
Stay mute.
Question is.
Here he goes. Okay, let's hear from Leanna then.
Okay, so where are we at right now? We're just discussing the pump station?
We're discussing the whole thing, not, not just the pump station, the whole thing.
Okay, so uh, I've been down in the parking lot with the contractor working on this. And we, as we started out, it was, the digging was terrible. They couldn't, they couldn't move a foot without it backfilling on them. They put trench boxes in and then they had to put uh, metal sheets behind the trench box in order to move forward because they just couldn't go. They couldn't move. So it took them quite a while, but as they started to come up a little bit, it got, the digging got a little better, not great, but a little better. And they were, they came to the professional building.
Newcastle's, is that you, Matt?
No, it's you.
Well, I don't know. You can hear us though, right?
Yes.
So, okay, so uh, we came to the professional building, we found their line. They put the manhole in, they hooked it up, uh, ran a stub to the edge of the property. And um, then they continued on. As they got to Cobengale, Cobengale had put a new line in, they hooked Cobengale up. Uh, then they continued on when we got by the bathroom and over towards Dammer Scotta Center, as we got in that area, I said, you know, we should be picking up that line. And uh, they found a, a line, but it was a deadline. So we kept going and I said, uh, we're going to be above that because we haven't hit that line. And they said, well, this is what the plan is and this is what we're going to do. And they kept on going. I said, well, I think we ought to stop and take a look at this. And they said, no, this is the plan. We're going to stick by the plan. And they went up and put uh, the, put the um, manhole in it by Rennie's. So um, that's when I contacted the town and said, we've got a problem here. And uh, that's how this has all come about. I'm trying to everywhere here. I don't know. Hello?
Leanna, we're in a board of selectmen's meeting.
Yes, I just had to get rid of that phone ringing. I, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where it ended and that's how we uh, came upon this problem. Is that what you wanted to hear, hear from me?
Yeah, there's, there's that problem and then the, you know, the, which is part of, I guess, from my way of thinking, a bigger problem. But Josh has had his hand up for a little while and I told him that I, I want to hear from Josh and see what he has to say. And then we can talk about all of this. Okay. Josh, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you. I guess what was, my question is, what was asked of the sanitary district board? What was the formal request from the town? Um, and then I might have a follow-up question after that.
I, I wasn't at that meeting. Um, Leanna or one of the trustees uh, could answer that.
Uh, originally, when the, when the town was putting the line and they asked if we would take over the new collector line back to the property lines. And we, and we agreed to do that.
Okay, so that would be back to the property line, which would be the uh, buildings?
I land, yeah. Scott. Back to this, back to the property line of the buildings, because from the building, from the property line, it's the, the building owner's responsibility. It's not, it's not the district's responsibility.
Okay, so for example, uh, just for my edification, uh, if you are the gas station.
Yes.
Okay, uh, and I'm not doing that because Daryl's here. I just popped out on the map here. You have responsibility from the collector line to where it enters the gas station. Is that correct?
No.
No, to the property line.
To the property line. Is that that dotted line there that I see or where is the property line?
Yep, we're. Robin, where the, where the sewer line is, we connected uh, from the, we own the line right from the gas station all the way to that line. We paid to, we had to put that whole line in. It's our property line. Uh, uh, basically we straddle it.
Even though that's the municipal parking lot?
Uh, that's still on Cobengale property, right there where you're seeing the parking spots.
Yeah, that's Cobengale. Okay.
Yeah.
Another one. Oh, we don't want to look at Newcastle Square because they have parking too. Matt, help me out here. Where's the building that owns the property line? I'm at Two Fish.
So, yeah, on Two Fish, um, yeah, and maybe you can move the pointer up there. Yeah, you can see right there where the pointer is, where that.
Yeah.
That dot is where the, the uh, sewer manhole seven is. That's the property line. And then the yellow line that extends from there, oh, yeah, would be uh, uh, Two Fish, that'd be the private property.
Okay.
And so, so uh, this is just, um, yeah, one example where the, the uh, the town has to replace that service line because of the agreements that we've made in the past with capacity. However, once that line is replaced, the property owners know that that will become their responsibility.
Ability, okay.
Will be consist, will be consistent throughout. So the lines from the, the parking lot to the, within the parking lot to the businesses are public property. And then from the property line of the parking lot to the business is uh, private property with the exception of Newcastle Realty and what's on this is Serendipity Give, Gifts and The Breakfast Place in their agreements from nineteen sixty with the town, the town. the town agreed to pay for the sewer line up to the floor. So we have, we have that responsibility going forward. But with just about every other one, it's going to be the property owner's responsibility from where the, the parking lot ends to their building.
Okay, Josh, does that answer your question then? What the, what the agreement is? Okay, go ahead.
Not really. I, I just wanted to know what the request was brought to the board. The sanitary board last week, I believe. What was the, and they denied that request, but I just want to know what that request was from Leanna. You know, how did you present that request? What was, what was in, what's in the minutes of that meeting, how it was presented?
I don't have the minutes in front of me, but what I told them was that the town had asked that we take over that pump station. The new pump that is proposed to be put in. And what the trustees said was that they didn't want to do that because it's a private pump station. It doesn't serve, it only serves one residence or one building, and it doesn't serve the whole town. And we can't take over private pump stations because everybody in town has a private pump station. We'd want us to take it over. So, and another part of that was that was how it was going to be taken care of when the power went out. Who was going to service it? You know, we have eight pump stations that we haul generators out to. My understanding is that the capacity for the pump station would be enough for at least a day. So the power usually isn't out for more than four hours. But sometimes it's out for a couple of days. When it's out for a couple of days, we are crazy busy trying to keep up with everything. So that was a concern that, to run over there and pump that out and keep going was going to be a burden on us. And Jan said that he thought that there could be a battery backup or something, because it doesn't use that much power. It wouldn't pump for that long that could be put in to take care of that. So, but the trustee said, because it's a, it's a private pump station, it's too bad Mr. Flood would take it over once it's put in. Then that would solve a lot of problems. That's where, that's where the trustees stood during the meeting.
Okay, and I guess my follow-up question would be, would, would the trustees in the, the board be willing to have a maintenance agreement with the town of Damascotta if that should arise? That they, if we could meet to the specs of what you guys would put in with a hookup, for a generator hookup, that we could have an agreement with you that we would have to pay for a maintenance agreement for that pump station?
Could you repeat that again, please?
Would you, the gist of it is, would the, the district be willing to have a maintenance agreement if it had came down to it with the town to take care of this in an emergency situation?
Well, I, well, I, I talked with Ideal, Alan Ideal, and I, and I was talking to him about this whole situation. And the cost of us, you paying us to maintain that pump station would be more than if you, and Alan said, geez, if they told me what the pump was, I'd just keep one on the shelf and they ever needed it. But he said, if they had a problem, they'd just call me back, come down and pump it out. And it would cost you less to do that than to have us maintain it for you. Realistically.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Aside from putting a generator in and pumping it out when needed, when there's a storm and the power goes out, what else is involved with maintenance? Pardon me?
It's mostly just making sure the pump station keeps going.
Whoever's talking, the gentleman, I can't hear or understand.
Well, it's basically keeping the pump station going. There isn't that much maintenance to it, not for a residential line. If you had 10,000 gallons going into it a day, it'd be a lot more of a headache like ours are.
Yeah, this, the flow from Damascotta Center is, the highest flow I could see was back in 2017 and averaged about 400 gallons a day. It's a relatively small flow. And Leanna's right, it's, there's, there's alarms on the panel in case something goes wrong, then an alarm will go off. And then you know something needs to get addressed.
Mark?
I get a question. The, the line that's coming out of the Damascotta Center, how much lower is that than the line that was actually put in?
It's, it's about two and a half feet lower.
Okay, in that line, the contractor put the line into what was on the plans to the elevation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess the question I have is the other, the other alternative that we just leave it the way it is, and it flows into the old gravity fed line, is that right? And if we do that, then all of the other lines that we're feeding into that have to be closed off, is that right?
Yes.
It will be as part of the contract regardless.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. So we just keep it as it is and call it a day?
Well, Matt, there's one, excuse me, if,
Go ahead.
if we were to abandon this line, all we need to do is plug it at this manhole. And so that's a relatively very simple dig down in several locations along that line to, to cut off the, so you just plug it at the manhole. But if we leave the line in there, you're going to need to have flow going through there.
The whole plan was to abandon that line, okay?
Yes. We're trying to work with the sanitary district to help us do that and do it efficiently. If, if there's not a sufficient flow, and I, you know, I know, because we were over at the sanitary district a couple of years ago talking about that line that was sagging and is not in good shape to begin with. You know, I feel like, from my perspective, the town has been over to come up with a solution, upgrading all of the lines, all of the sewer lines in the parking lot, making it more efficient using, you know, today's technology, which ought to last for a long time. And I don't know, it just seems that we're not, we're getting some pushback. You know, we've been good partners, good, you know, we've tried to work together, and it just doesn't seem to be working. I know, I heard that the cost of the lift station could be between $18,000 and $20,000 more than we've already put into the project. So, I don't know, Mark?
Yes, I get a question. That, that line, Jan, that comes out of that, that you said there was two and a half feet lower than the new line that's there. What, what is that for a line? What's, what's it made out of?
I believe, I believe it's an old dam line, but I'm not sure. I don't know if, if Alan had gotten a camera in there or not, Leanna.
Yes, what he found was, some of it was PVC, and some of it, then it turned to the clay tile.
You know, and that's what we're trying to avoid, is having clay tile underneath here.
Yep.
And then my other point would be is, is if we leave that line in there, and then that's the only line that's servicing the old existing line with the sag in it, you're going to have very little use coming out of there. And then you're going to have the sag, you're going to have a lot of that solid setting in that sag. A large volume of water that was keeping that cleaned out. Am I correct?
Pretty, pretty much, yeah.
Well, I, I guess, another question, I, as I understand it, there's a, a maintenance fee now to maintain that sagging line, is that correct?
Yes. We, we don't have enough trustees here to make a decision on this.
No, that's fine. I'm just asking questions. I want to understand.
But that's what you're asking, I, I want to be clear that that's what you're asking, is that if you pay a maintenance fee, that we will take care of that pump station for you.
Depends on the fee. You know, it, it gets to the point too, where if you need, if you have a generator and somebody has to come and start up the generator and do what I have to do to get it to going, if this is right next to the restrooms, is there a possibility that we could put a solar panel with a battery backup for the generator? And that could take care of the problem, so that, you know, the maintenance, whatever the other maintenance is, would be less in both
Yes.
and our, and in, you know, how much it's going to cost to do. And again, because you're getting rid of the maintenance that you're paying on the line that's failing now.
Yeah, and you know, the other thing is, is when I was a trustee on that, on the other side, on that board, we were always saying, the town needs to take care of this so that we can do away with those lines. And now we're seeing the town go ahead and step up and do everything they can to go ahead and make this all work. And then I feel like we're not getting some help on the other side.
It's like Scott has his hand up if.
Right, I, I understand that, Mark, but you also, as being a trustee, understand that we cannot take over private pump stations. But, like I said, and we discussed, was a maintenance fee, and then we would maintain it. That's, I think that's what Josh was talking, right, Josh? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, that was what I was trying to figure out, what would be the most cost-effective measure, whether a private entity or an agreement with the sanitary district.
Hey.
Right. Maybe we should look at both of those numbers and make a decision that way.
Yeah, I, I think that if we put the pump station in, we would have to go out on a bid, contract bid, if you guys, you know, are not just being good neighbors.
Can I interject?
I don't know who that is, but.
George.
George, yeah, go ahead.
One thing we discussed at the meeting yesterday was that as far as the sewer part of this thing, Chase has got to come back and finish their work. This pump station would be a kind of a separate thing, and it would probably be the best to have Chase finish up, to go up to the Catch Basin, I think it's 3B, and the restroom line ties into that, River Grill line ties into that. But leave Damascotta Center's line alone, but put out the, for a change order to the restroom part to do the, the lift station, because they've got electrical contractors, Chase doesn't have electrical contractors. That's sort of what we talked about, but it's, it's up to grabs in terms of how the town really wants to do it.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that I have, if I saw somebody had a comment, is that, you know, and I'll go back to what Mark says, you know, we're a regional service center. And even though, you know, only a few people live in town, a few, you know, standards, 2200 people live in town, there are 1,700 or so people that use the town services every day. And I think that, you know, this is one instance where even though it's one business, this whole parking lot issue and all of the sewage and water and everything else that goes along with it is really for the greater good. And I, you know, personally, I feel that, and I'm not speaking for any of the other, other board members, is that there's not much coming back over the net with all that we're doing to help the sanitary district in making improvements under that parking lot that you don't need to make because we're doing it. So that's just my sense.
Well, Leanna mentioned, Leanna mentioned that they couldn't take it over because there was just one individual user. So what if we decided that, what if, yes, the Rennies are going to go ahead and make some changes, but what if we took Rennies and put in there two and made it two? Then would you take it?
Put the restrooms in there. It's right next to the restroom.
It's not possible to do that.
Why?
Jan, would you just talk on that?
Sure, I'm sure. Let me just make sure I'm, I'm not muted.
No, you're not.
The Rennies line. There we go. The Rennies line is, it comes out quite deep, even deeper in, in here. We'd have to come across the parking lot and then connect into that pump station. You know, whether Rennies, and I think Rennies is, is committed to making these changes that they, internal to their buildings, because they recognize that there's a maze of pipes right out their back door and underneath their floor that could cause them problems long-term. So they're committed to making this change so that they would come out air and can come gravity into this line. We, what we could do is currently, I know that the Damascotta River Grill comes into this and other, and, and into that Damascotta Center line. However, I know that Leanna has expressed concern because that Damascotta River Grill line carries a lot of greases and other things, and it's been problematic, so she wanted to have it come directly into a, into a manhole. So that's what we've designed here. So.
And we're essentially doing this at the request of Leanna, who wants a specific one for the Damascotta River Grill because of grease. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right, but if we, if we were to put that in the pump station, you know, granted, the flow would increase, but we'd also have a much higher maintenance cost on the, when we can get to, just put it in, into a gravity sewer, which would be less, less of a, of a maintenance issue.
Okay.
So, I mean, to the extent that the Damascotta Center, I don't know if it has other tenants or what, how you'd look at that, but it would be a single property owner, I guess, would, would be tying into it. I don't know how it would work if you had a shopping center with several tenants in it.
What if we tied the restrooms in it? It's right next to the restrooms. Then it's more than one property owner, and it's also a municipal function as far as everybody and their brother is going to use the restrooms. So it makes it more of a public thing, not a private, you know, business.
Yeah. Typically, if you can get into something gravity, you wouldn't, you would do that because you're not paying for the energy to lift that and bring wheel up and get it out, so.
Gotcha.
I was just trying to make a point, that if there was two uses in that, they would take it over. Right.
Right.
Right, so Robin, both Josh and Scott had their hands up.
Yeah, yeah, I, I see Josh, and I, I don't see but about four people, so I'm sorry if I'm not calling on people that have their hands up. So Josh, go ahead, and then whoever was next after Josh.
The question, the, I guess the observation I had, I onboarded to comment about the sewer pump station. I think we're in a perfect position to ask Chase for a price and for the contractor for the restroom for a price. And that would classify for a kind of a bid, bid process with those two people, contractors being right there. I think that would be the fairest approach. That's just my observation.
I agree.
The only issue we were thinking about is a timing issue. If we're going to serve this from the, you know, from the restroom, we have to wait till that restroom is done. And maybe, maybe Chase would say, fine, we can install that pump station, but then we'll, the electrical and everything else would have to be part of the restroom project or something like that. There's a little bit of a logistical thing there because we'd There, there's a little bit of a logistical thing there because we'd have to put up a temporary electrical service, a temporary board that we can mount the, mount the, the operation panel to, that sort of stuff. Be, we can certainly do that if that's what you want to do. And prices for both.
Okay. Does somebody else had a comment or question? Matt, who was that?
Uh, Scott had his hand up a while ago.
Okay, Scott.
I, I forget what it was, but it seems to me a lot of this would have been taken care of if elevations would have been taking at the Rennies building and Dammer Scotta Center. And then you can't tell me you couldn't get gravity from there back to the pump station. It is gravity now from there back to the pump station. So, you know, more people need to take a little responsibility here.
This is Bobby where I'm, I'm going to go back to the conversation that was taking place when the trench was open. The fact that they put that pipe in with not knowing where Rennies lateral was and where the Dammer Scotta Center lateral was. I, I can't even believe there was not more time spent to try to locate that. And I just, that, to spend 20, now we're into $20,000 for one unit, one building. So I'm kind of backing Scott a little bit with the responsibility.
Well, you could go the other way too. We asked the, the sanitary district for the numbers and they gave us the numbers and we relied on their numbers. So you could, you know, you could.
The number, that the numbers that the district probably got were from right P S from years ago.
The numbers they got were from Barry, who did the work for the town. For the town, what Ted Barry did. I didn't locate those lines.
Okay. Uh, that's, you know, at this point, that's not getting us anywhere. We have to move forward and what we're going to do, I think we've gotten a lot of information tonight. Look, go ahead, man.
I think that the trustees have a better idea of what's going on now. So let's, let them discuss this and we can revisit it in a week, maybe, when we could get all together. Does that sound reasonable?
So you want to have a joint trustees board of selectmen meeting in a week? Is that what your suggestion?
What do you guys think?
Before the, before the next selectment meeting.
Right. Did you hear that? Jan said that he felt that the trustees should get together before the next selectment's meeting.
Okay. All right.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
I, well, we're looking at February 3rd. I, I don't, I don't know that the selectmen need to act on this. Uh, we can, um, hear what the, if the trustees have a special meeting, they can give us some indication on how to proceed and then Jan can get to work and finalize the specs so we can get the, uh, the sewer contractor back. That's my thought on it. I don't know that the select.
To me. Yeah. I, I guess, you know, the only thing I would say is if the selectmen have any specific concerns that they can relay them to Matt in an email and he can transmit them. And then we can rely on Matt and Jan and if needed, Josh and Lou, who are kind of representing the board on these decisions. Does that work? Josh, I see your hand up. You got back on the screen.
Yeah, I'm back in. I just want to know whether there's certain specs if we want to, you know, if we do come up on the agreement with the sanitary district, that, you know, they, they need to have that pump station at that certain spec before they would even consider doing a maintenance agreement.
Right. It has to meet our specifications. I've got to talk to Jan about that.
Okay.
Let's see.
Now, does somebody else have a comment? Matt, if you have your full screen, I still have the map, but.
No, I still have the map too. Just see my own picture there. Uh, oh, Josh, uh, Jan, why don't you take down the, uh, the screen? There you go.
Oh, thank you.
Now we can see everybody.
Oh, very good. Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? For the good of the order here this evening? If, if something comes up after you've, you know, thought about it, board, select board, send that an email or give him a phone call if you have any other questions. And we will wait to hear then from the board of trustees. We'll get in touch with Matt. And if the conversation is what's going to happen with the lift station, uh, then we will get specifications from Leanna to move forward. And we want to do this fairly quickly. Is that right?
Yes.
And if there's any reason to, to have the board take formal action, then I'll talk to Robin and we'll set up a special meeting.
Sounds good.
Good.
Well, listen, I, I appreciate all of you, uh, being here and presenting points of view and giving us some information. I learned a lot and working through the technical difficulties, Leanna, at your group there. Appreciate the time that you took, you know, to meet with us and help clarify the issues for us. It really has been helpful. Jan, as always, thank you for joining us and providing all the information that you do and making me, I know, a lot smarter than what's going on back there.
Thank you for helping, helping us out too.
Any other comments or questions? All right, then we will continue with the remainder of Board of Selectment agenda. If I can find it.
Okay, I'm leaving.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, George.
All right.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Bye bye.
Okay. And so we are good on that agenda item, correct?
Yes.
One thing, I'm going to go back down then to the official action items. We are at the main service center coalition renewal. And I think at this point, Matt is the representative and Mark is the alternate.
Make sure I'm not on mute. Yes, both of us would continue to participate. It's just that the, the executive committee appointed me to fill a vacancy on the, the board. So I think I should be the delegate. And then they went ahead and made me secretary. So.
All right.
So unless Mark wants to do that.
No, 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 you keep doing it.
Okay. Well, I make a motion then that, uh, Matt remain as the delegate to the main service center coalition with Mark as the alternate.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that was it on our agenda for this evening.
Yes, then we just have Matt Murphy waiting.
I know, I know. We have to, okay. Somebody has something pressing for discussion items since it's getting a little late. Can we, anybody have something pressing for? Okay, then I, I make a motion that we adjourn the selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Okay. And we will open the board of assessors meeting. We'll call the board of assessors meeting to order. And welcome back.
Good evening. Happy New Year, everybody.
Same to you. Thanks for hanging in there.
Well, absolutely. Hey, it's a, always a learning, uh, learning experience. So it's a good thing. I did a little deed work. I helped Matt out a little bit. So we're good. Um, so I'll start with the assessors report. Um, I hope you've all had a chance to review that. I'll, I'll go down quickly through the property transfers listed. A pretty active year, the beginning of the year, we're already at about nine transfers so far since the, the beginning of 2021. So it's a very active market, a lot of turnover. Uh, the businesses, as I put in there, we've added, uh, so to date, seven new businesses. There's a couple more coming on board um, in the next couple of months. Unfortunately, there were some closings and some businesses that moved. But through review, we're, we're growing that list again, added a couple more today. Through the help of everybody here in the office. So, um, that's going well. There'll, there'll be some nice letters going out. Uh, the commercial property, um, I'll, that statement is what it is. I'll use one example, the first federal building, uh, bank building on Main Street. That building is listed, um, as in its entirety as a bank. Um, a bank value is greater than an office value. Um, so when that is updated, um, that value will come down because of the office space being in there as well as the bank. Um, when it was originally put in, the bank had that entire building. So that, that's, that's an instance where, um, when they're adjusted, we're going to see some decline in, in, um, values uh, through those updates.
That's across the board for businesses, not just that bank?
Uh, that is, um, it's not all, it's not all of the commercial buildings or properties. There are some that will go down. There are some that will go up um, potentially as well. Uh, most of what I've discovered is, um, a decline as opposed to an increase. And that's why I said that as April 1st rolls in and we have um, a clearer look at all of those properties, um, as far as the tenants and who's in there, um, I'll be able to give you a much more accurate number, um, on that date.
Okay. But it's not going to be a wash. Going up.
I don't anticipate a wash, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, the, the revale, as it says, is ongoing. The section in regard to the pond circle development, uh, that is an assisted, um, main housing assisted property. Um, so there are requirements of the town. Um, I am trying to reach out to get that information. On average, those, those properties are about 30% of value for 11 properties. Excuse me. About 70% of the total value of, it's missing about 30% of value across the board for those 11 properties. Um, so it's a significant amount, definitely worth the legwork to determine exactly what we need to do there. So I'm on that. We'll get that tightened up as soon as we can. Uh, the state audit. Uh, the Betty error that I made in the, that commitment actually benefited us. It, our, our return increased, um, on the Betty account and, uh, on the homestead. Uh, so that worked in our favor, fortunately for me and the town. And then the, uh, the TIF becomes eligible for next year's tax commitment. So that will come off on the other side. So we increased our total overlay from 203,000 to 223,000 um, and change. Uh, so it worked out good for the town, uh, from that point of view.
Question?
Okay. Yeah, questions or thoughts?
Lou?
Uh, how are the sales values affecting the base? I know of one house that sold for a hundred thousand dollars more than it was on the market for last year.
I, I would say on average right now, we're running about 20 to 25% over the assessed value. There are definitely a couple of properties. You spoke of one. I just had another one go through yesterday that was, more than double the assessed value of that property. So, um, and that's the second time that property is sold in the last eight years. Um, so again, that's on the review for the revale. Those, those sales will definitely, um, have an effect on, on values, uh, when that time comes. Obviously, it's not a one-off. But all of those things are being taken into account. Um, and as I see those, I do, I am making visits. Um, doing a little checkup, make sure that our paperwork, uh, here in the office is accurate as best it can be. Um, I do think that one of the things that we miss, um, or have missed is the interior, uh, quality. I think that's something that, you know, when the revale was done in 04, since that time, some of these properties, as you look at them sell, the values have grown from the exterior. It doesn't look dramatically different. The features are there, the outbuildings are there. But the interior value or the perceived interior value and quality, um, is probably a little bit higher uh, than we expect. And that's something that, again, during the, during the property visits, um, I'm making note of.
Hey. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to abatements then.
Okay. Okay. So the two listed on this attachment, um, Chris Williams, uh, is on Belvedere Road. Back in November, we approved, uh, excuse me, you approved an abatement on his property, uh, for uh, an additional garage, a double listing of a addition. So through his, you know, his rights, um, as a property owner, he can go back for two years to, um, request an abatement, which is what he has done. So I would ask for your consideration on that. And then the other abatement included in there comes from the, um, state audit. Uh, we under-valued the homestead exemptions at Schooner Cove by $5,000. Um, so that's an $80 abatement. And that has already been up, that the Schooner Cove, um, updates have already been made and are underway. I mean, I'll follow up with them to ensure that we're correct for this year.
Okay, do I hear a, a motion on the abatements? Well, I'm making a motion on the abatement to approve the Miles Healthcare Schooner Cove vacation out of $80. And the Chris Williams, uh, Belvedere Road abatement for two years. Total of $1,280. Any discussion? All in favor? Hey.
Okay. And my last item, um, was a discovery I made today. Uh, we, I think Matt sent out that attachment to you this afternoon. Um, okay, Maya's Hair Studio at 161 Church Street. As I put in my notes, uh, after reviewing all the commercial buildings, almost all are set at 1.0. I did find two buildings downtown that were not. But the grade factor for the Church Street property was put in at 2.9. Um, so ultimately, that's a, almost one and a half times more than in value of what it is actually worth. But I adjusted that back down to use that same factor. It drops from 2399 to 104666. And that is in line with the other properties in town. Um, she is not aware of this. Again, I just discovered this this afternoon. Um, and researched it through, uh, to present tonight. I, I would think so, yes.
Yeah.
So I ask for your consideration on that adjustment as well, on that abatement as well.
Okay. Can I ask a question? How is the grading structure determined? And then why might this have been so layoff based?
So the, so for the town, the revaluation, um, it appears that during the revale, that they adjusted all of those to one. Now, whether they were in there prior to that time, I'm not aware. I couldn't find any information on that. The, you know, the, as I was reviewing the individual property card. Um, the, you know, the, as I was reviewing the individual property card, um, having driven by that property, it, it just struck me as a little off. Um, so as I, I included with you the backside of the property card showing that information, I can't, um, you know, if, if, I, I can speak to the bank and I can speak to, um, the Sherwin-Williams buildings, those were also put in at 1.0, so that's the consistency over the last couple of years um, that I can speak to in that regard. But as you increase, the, 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 the design of that grade factor is to uh, separate buildings um, that, kind of like an average building. Um, if it's a little bit better than average, then you could put in, say, 1.1 and that's gonna accommodate um, a little, you know, a little better piece of property. Or building, I should say.
If I could just add, this has been at this inflated grade ratio for quite a few years, uh, what?
Yeah, 2000, 2008.
2008, yeah.
Are there criteria that make a 1.0? You know, if I'm a commercial business, I know we're kind of getting off topic, but I just want to understand the grading factor. So if I'm, if I want to buy a commercial property or whatever, I can say if it has a wheelchair ramp, you get two points. If it has an elevator, it gets 10 points. If it has, you know, five parking places or what room for parking, it gets, you know, what, what does 1.0 mean beside average? Is that's just somebody's looking at it and say, yeah, this looks pretty good, or do you have set criteria?
So, um, I, I, I will speak to the fact that the, as, as much as I can, that the 1.0 factor was put in at the revale. So in their determination at that time, that is, that is when that rating was achieved.
But no document that says in order to be a 1.0, you have to have this, 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 and this.
Correct. And there's.
All of that is a subjective, then? Whatever.
Correct, yes. As an assessor, we have to go out and, and determine the value as best we can. And then there is also that, um, independent grading or, or point of view, uh, perspective on that property. So if it is, you know, again, if you have, um, from my perspective, uh, to see the Sherwin-Williams building and the Dollar General being put in at 1.0 as well, to, to maintain that consistency, um, you know, are those buildings slightly better than, um, an old brick building downtown? I would go out on a limb and say, probably. Um, that is accounted for in quality and class and how, how we build the properties, um, and build, you know, and, and gather that information. Um, but that coding, the grade factor allows you to, um, even out, equalize, um, the values of the, of the buildings.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the abatement, uh, for Mia's hair design, sheer hair design, whatever, in the amount of $2,163.75? Oh, Matt has a comment.
Robin, I'm asking, uh, that Matt and I agree on this, that we, we go back as far as we can to, to, uh, provide the abatement and we can go back two additional years, um, on, on that abatement. So asking for a three-year.
Case, we can't give an amount because each year's gonna be a little bit different.
Uh, bear with me one second.
Oh, okay. So her business name is different than her business name?
Yeah, Hair House Incorporated is the business.
Name, yeah, okay, because it's Mia Sheer Design, I think is the name.
Okay, so the abatement for tax year 2019, 2020 is $2,177.27. And the abatement for tax year 18, uh, 2018, 2019 is $2,204.32.
Okay, so you want to do a total, so we can just do a motion on the total?
Yes.
You must have your calculator there.
I'm on it.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept that as an abatement?
I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, abatement for Hair House Incorporated for $6,544.34. Is that right? Thirty-four cents.
I'll second it.
Okay, I second it. Any further discussion?
Boy, Mia's gonna be happy.
I'll say.
Holy, no, she doesn't even know.
No. No, that'll be a nice visit tomorrow. At least, at least one person will be happy with the assessor and.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? And will we expect to see a few more of these?
Uh, no.
Through this? Okay, this is.
Uh, no, actually, we're, um, as the, there's 185, 185-day abatement period from commitment. Um, so truly anything discovered before March 1st, late February, um, is eligible. Um, I don't have anything else in front of me or that I've found so far that would require any action.
Okay. No, I'm talking about you driving by a business and saying, I don't know if that's right.
Well, it's, it's when I get back and I look at the property card that I, that I question what it says.
Okay, alright, are we just? Lou, what'd you say?
I said, can you find some going the other way?
I, I will do my very best. I'm working on that too. There are those out there already. Those, those have already started to happen, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Only thing we, uh, didn't put on the agenda for you is the approval of the minutes for November 4th. Those were sent out quite a long time ago. Would you like to just, we could send those out again and, and then approve those at your next Board of Assessors meeting?
That would be.
Yeah, that seems good.
That would be good.
I make a motion we adjourn. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Working tonight, so, but take care, buddy.
Thanks, thank you.
Stay well.
You too.